...to the board, can I start with a roll call?
Barbara Barrosa.
Norma Drummond.
Tara Franco.
We have two board members who are currently absent, who are expected, but in the meantime, we're going to ask our alternate Mary Semenara to stand in for one or both of them until, well, one of them, until such time as they come. So you will serve in that capacity until they arrive or, you know, for the whole meeting in the event that they aren't able to get here. Can I ask everyone to stand for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which stands one nation, one tribe, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
A reminder for folks, our next meeting will be April, Tuesday, April 8th, but our May meeting will be on a Wednesday. Just, uh, we set the schedule because of a conflict on that Tuesday, so Wednesday, May 14th. We do have two sets of minutes to approve. I don't have him with me to know who was at each set, so I want to make sure we have a quorum. We should be fine, actually, though. All right, so do I have a motion to approve the minutes of January 14th as amended as these sent an amendment? Yeah. So, um, okay, so...
I'll second.
Okay, so, on favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I am abstaining.
And Barbara will abstain for the January minutes. The minutes for February, um, I didn't see any amendments to those, so do I have a motion to approve those?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, good. So that was unanimously sent. All right, um, so our first item of the agenda is an adjourned public hearing. Appeal 3618 Meyer, William C. Meyer, for Spring Meadow Lane, Hobell Junction, requesting a 45-foot rear line variance for a proposed 11-foot by 16-foot garden shed pursuant to section 194-107 of the zoning ordinance. We did, as requested, when we last saw this, um, actually, you're going to move over because Jim is down here. Mr. Meyer did email us with an update that he's been working with his title insurance company, um, they have a, they have assigned an attorney, um, and so they are working on the matter, but the expectation is that it's still going to take a couple of months. So, actually, I need a motion to open the public hearing on this one?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye. So, there's really nothing new beyond the fact that you have the title insurance's attention, um, the title insurance company's attention, and they are, have assigned somebody, and they are working through the issue. They, I had, did have a discussion with Mr. Meyer earlier today just to get a sense of timing. Um, I think your request is that we should consider adjourned this until October.
October.
Yeah, just to be able to give, give the issues time to work through. Any questions from board members? All right, you guys can make your swap.
Slowly head to town.
Hello.
I'd see you later.
All right, so is there anyone here to speak for or against Mr. Meyer's application? Otherwise, we're gonna, there'll be another opportunity when we adjourn it for October. Seeing none, do I have a motion to adjourn this to October?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, thank you. Hopefully, we'll get some resolution to this in the, in the meantime.
What's the date?
14th. The second Tuesday. All right, item number two, an adjourned public hearing for appeal 3651 Signa, Salvatore Signa, 66 Saddle Ridge Road, Hobell Junction, requesting a 19-foot sideline variance for an existing 1,100-square-foot sport court and a 240-square-foot shed pursuant to section 194-95(c) of the zoning ordinance. Okay, um...
Can I go for a second call?
Yeah, well, I have a motion to put this on for second call because I don't see the applicant here.
Um, can we ask somebody to call them, maybe?
Do you want to, Pam, give us a phone call? All right, so do I have motion for second call?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, so we'll put this on, it will be the, we'll revisit it at the end of the meeting, just in case somebody shows up. Item number three, at this point, our public hearings are done with the exception of if the Signa application is heard later on in the meeting. So at this point, we're looking at reviews. This, in most cases, will be the first time that we're seeing these. If you do get scheduled for a public hearing, you're going to see Pam before you leave. She'll, at the end of the table here, she'll give you instructions for your sign. And we do, please, make sure that your sign is written with a sharpie so that it does not wipe off in the, with the rain or any kind of the storm at this point, and make sure your sign is, stays up, stays propped up with the, with the snow and the plowing and everything. Signs, it's been a little difficult to do that, so. Actually, are we, a review for the Mid Huts Development Corp. has been adjourned at their request, so that will go on, that will go on for the April meeting. So we are actually up to item number four, appeal 3664 Putnam County National Bank by Daniels Porco and Lusardi LLP. Is anybody here for this one? Okay.
You're probably running low a little.
Yeah, I, let's, what?
Oh, there's Dr. Signa.
Oh, here he is.
Who are you?
Okay, um, so let's, again, let's put, take a motion for a second call on Putnam County National Bank?
That's where he is, so, yeah.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, we'll try it again. Item number five, appeal 3665 Keely. Mary, could I ask you to go find Pam and let her know that Dr. Signa's here? We, Dr. Signa, we actually had somebody calling you, um, because we actually had already passed your item, but we put you on for a second call, so after we're done with the other items, we'll come back and do yours, okay? So Michael Keely, 15 Ethan Allen Drive, Stormville, requesting an eight-foot sideline variance to keep a pre-existing dwelling located at 215 Rushmore Road, Stormville, which was made non-conforming by the Vargas Two-Lot Subdivision in 2003, filed map number 12180 pursuant to section 194-17 of the zoning ordinance.
I'm going to recuse myself.
Okay. All right, so we have before us an application, um, that, gentlemen, one of you is Mr. Keely?
Right.
Okay, that you have purchased this lot, um, understanding that it was a subdivision that was approved by the planning board, I want to say, back in 2003? It was a while ago?
I guess that's when it started, or...
Um, and so there's actually a filed map, so that the, and the understanding was, and the map clearly says that the house that is on, the existing house on one of the lots is supposed to be demolished, um, and would, would be replaced with a new house on that lot because it's actually, um, not in compliance with the setback requirements. So explain to us, what are you trying to do?
Well, the house, it's just one corner of the house that's actually not in compliance, and, uh, it's actually a matter of seven feet. Uh, we thought it was eight, but our engineer said it was only seven. Um, otherwise, it would be in full compliance. So what we're asking you, at this time, the house is in good condition, good structure, and it's been lived in until approximately about six months ago, that we, at this time, we'd like to keep the house and not demolish it.
Okay, so you bought the property knowing that the expectation was that house was, was going to be demolished?
Right.
Okay. And you're not living in it?
We're not, no.
And there's nobody else living in it?
Nobody's living in it right now.
So is your intention to rent that property?
Well, actually, our intent, when we bought the property, we have two sons. This is one, and another one, to build one, the house on the rear lot, and one, the house on the front lot.
Okay.
But, right now, my younger son here doesn't have the money to build the front house.
Okay.
So what we were planning on doing was renovating it somewhat, you know, making it livable, and maybe down the road when he's a little more established, you know, then if, if he wanted to demolish it, I mean, or maybe never, I don't know.
Right.
We'll cross that bridge when we get there. But the house, like, we didn't really pay a lot of attention to the house before we owned the property, but, you know, once we bought it and went through the house, it is a good sound structure, it's been there since the 1960s, it's not going to change the, you know, the neighborhood at all, and the only reason that it would have to be knocked was seven feet of one corner of it, which I think we gave you a map of.
Mm-hmm.
The rest of the house is all in compliance.
I guess my, my concern is that the subdivision was approved with the full knowledge that the house was going to be demolished.
Right.
Um, and you bought that lot...
Right.
...with full knowledge of that.
Yes.
So, um, again, I, I hear what you're saying, um, I don't know, questions or comments from board members? He's right, it's one little corner of the, of the house that's not in compliance.
And it's just kind of a shame to knock a whole house because of a seven-foot corner, you know?
How long, when did you purchase this property?
Uh, December, actually, it went on, it took about six months to buy it because, um, originally, it was a husband and wife that had subdivided it.
Right.
And the husband passed.
Right.
And, you know, it just took her a long time to get her, I guess, T's crossed and I's dotted to...
I don't know if he were on the planning board at the time.
Yeah, I remember the applicant, but I don't...
Yeah, but, um, and so, again, the Vargas family wanted the subdivision itself because they wanted a family member to live in the other lot, so...
That's what was actually going to happen.
I understand the...
They had a son that was gonna, look, as far as I understand, now, I, I don't know, but what our engineer had told us, that their son was gonna, they were going to build a house in the front for their son, and their house was going to be in the back.
Right. That was, that was part of the reason for their subdivision, well, that was the main reason for their subdivision at that time, so...
I'm sorry, when did you say there was somebody living there until how long?
I believe up until about six months ago. That's what our realtor had told us.
Okay.
It might be more than six months ago now, it might be seven or eight months.
From the time you purchased.
But it's, yeah, as far as, you know, when we were buying it, it was about six months before that.
Subdivision took place, I think, in 2003 or thereabouts.
2004.
2004, yeah.
It started in 2003.
So basically, that somebody had been occupying that property since when the subdivision was, um, came into being, that property was occupied, I mean, was occupied, and it continued to be occupied until six, eight months, a year ago.
Right, correct.
Yeah, I'm good for a public hearing.
I just have, um, if you, if you're going to do renovations, what, what are you looking, you're not looking at adding to the structure or...
Well, it wouldn't be major renovations, it would be just, you know, the house hasn't, you know, it needs painting, new carpeting, you know, things like that. I'm not, I guess I said renovations, but updating, you know?
Right.
Just cleaning it up and...
But no addition to...
No.
Beyond the variance that you, that they're doing?
No.
Right.
No.
Okay. I guess that's, my, my biggest issue is, this was fully vetted in the planning board and...
Well, that's the only...
We're kind of undoing them, the work of the board.
I have, I have a picture of the house.
Have we had a picture?
Well, this is color. That helps.
You know, the house is in...
Small, yeah.
It is a small house.
Yeah, and it's actually just...
I can understand why they wanted to demolish it and replace it, actually.
It's actually just this one corner that, because the house is on a little bit of an angle on the property.
Well, if there isn't...
There you go, thank you.
If that was just being represented, it, and it wasn't a important consideration in granting the subdivision, I guess it's one thing.
Mm-hmm.
And they were probably, we're just going to do it, okay, then that can be allowed.
No, you're right, they were, they were alleging that they were just going to demolish it, to new houses.
There's no engineering reason or well or septic system consideration.
It wasn't a condition of the approval?
No. How did I know?
It wasn't a condition, it was just noted on the map, because, again, their expectation was they were just going to replace the house.
Our, our engineer believed or implied to us that their son wanted it on the map, so he knew he was getting his...
Mm-hmm.
Again, I wasn't there at that time, so, but that's what our knowledge was, that he wanted it written in, that he was going to get a new house, that this one was going to be demolished. He didn't want to get stuck in this house.
All right, do I have a motion for public hearing?
So moved.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So if you don't mind, see Pam, right at the end of the...
Thank you.
She'll give you, um, her instructions for your sign, and we'll see you next month.
Thank you.
All right. Mary, can I bother you to go find John? And I thought I saw Mike Lesby outside in the lobby there. He's the, uh, the next one. Item number six, appeal 3666 Sarlo, Rick Sarlo, 1082 Hobell, uh, sorry, Route 82, Hobell Junction, is requesting a 35-foot percent variance for a 1,300-square-foot caretaker's apartment located in a 1,535-square-foot building in a B1 zone pursuant to section 194-87(a) of the zoning ordinance, and a seven-foot sideline variance for existing pavement and to allow vehicles within the side yard pursuant to section 194-109 of the zoning ordinance. Good evening.
Good.
Good, how are you? Never doubt that, Mike.
I'm just trying to kind of handle it.
Here, I have one. We have one. Yeah. I have a second one if you need it. Is it not big enough? I'm taking it home.
Well, it's the same package you have.
Okay.
You may need a bigger supplier, it's like a...
It's not a public hearing tonight, so...
The same thing that you guys are talking about. Effectively, this site is located over around, um, rid of, just south of the intersection of Grand Avenue. Uh, and in years past, you actually, the, the project had gotten previous site plan approval for the purposes of auto detailing. Somebody comes in, wants to get the car kind of detailed on it inside and out, drop it off, come back later, get it cleaned up. Uh, it had gotten, in addition to that, uh, it was kind of a multi-use type of deal over there, in addition, it got, a nail salon was approved for the site as well as an apartment. So, multi-type deal. So, um, that goes back a number of years ago. What's happened since then is, is nail salon was in, was out, wasn't working out so well. The, um, the detailing use still exists, but, but just, the business just hasn't been there. So effectively, it's, it's really been more or less provided for an apartment, when you want to...
Okay.
So now, Mr. Sarlo, with me tonight, is looking to come in.
And is somebody living in that apartment now?
Yes. Absolutely.
Who's, who's living in the apartment now? Because, again, within a business use, because it's a business zone, it's supposed to be somebody, a caretaker related to the business.
You want to give the history of the whole building?
Aye.
I just want to get this out, we got to get that right, also, just to get an idea of Mr. Sarlo.
So nail salon, when I did do this, the la, nail salon's for my daughter.
Right.
And she was there 10 years, and she developed asthma, so she closed it. So that was closed. I, myself, ran a detailing shop, and three years ago, I had closed it due to rotator cuff problems, I couldn't do it, so I closed it. However, I'm good now. I've had that taken care of, I'm good, so I'm going to open up that again come spring, and I'd like to sell some cars, too, because I do run across that, at times, in the past, I had run across people wanting to sell cars. Now, as of right now, the person who's in the back takes care of the place for me, keeps an eye on it, makes sure nobody...
The person in the back?
In the apartment.
Okay.
In the apartment, in the building, which is half of the building.
Okay.
And the front half was the salon.
How, how big is the apartment? How many bedrooms?
Two bedrooms.
Two bedrooms?
Uh-huh.
And it's just the first floor?
Uh-huh. The upstairs is just, uh, I had finished upstairs with a bathroom, it's a game room, whatever you want to call it.
I'm sorry, what's upstairs?
I finished the upstairs, I had finished the upstairs with permit and all, it's all done properly.
With what? What's upstairs?
That's just the game room, I use it for storage and stuff. Sometimes they go upstairs, they use it.
So there's a separate access for upstairs?
Through the, it's an attic, it was a finished attic.
What I'm saying is, you're, you're saying that you use it for storage, so you, you're not going into somebody's apartment that's in downstairs, so there's a separate access to get upstairs?
No, gotta go in through there, but...
You're going in for their apartment?
I don't, I don't go into their apartment, they know that I, you do use it, and they let me go in when they're there.
On the plan that we, we prepared...
Mike, you got to come to the microphone, please.
On the plan we prepared, which is just up in front of you, there was, as part of the planning board request, on the left-hand side, there's actually a detail showing the first floor and the second floor, and I know the plans, I don't know the size that you have, sometimes I get reduced copies, but it details the internal layout of, of the existing conditions of what's there now.
All right, I'll, I was on the planning board at the time that it was approved. Um, and there was extensive discussion about the fact that you were not going to have a lot of cars on the site at the time. It was really going to be one or, one or two cars, maybe one car waiting while you were working on one car.
Exactly, that's what I...
So, the fact that you're now asking for an expanded use, and, but you remember, it was something of a hard sell for the planning board at that time because you were asking for multiple uses already on, on the property and multiple space, you were asking for the, the story, the...
The tent?
The tent, yes, thank you, for lack of, can of structure.
Right, right.
And, and so it was a, not quite within the norm, if you remember, okay? So...
But if, if, if you notice, uh, the site, I'm sure you've driven by it?
Yep, all the time, yep.
Uh, it's a well-maintained spot.
It is, I, I agree with you.
I maintain that place, I take care of it, it's my baby. And it never looked, even when I was operating, because I don't, it was me and maybe somebody else would help me, but it was, you dropped the car off, I cleaned it up, it's picked up. It wasn't like cars were backed up, it was a car ride, because that is not what it was. But now I want to be able to sell some cars, when I get them, for some people, they want to sell a car, they don't want the car, it needs, whatever the case may be, I have an option, an opportunity of buying a car from the person, and I can make a little bit more money. That's just solely on the auto detailing, but...
And maybe I can elaborate on the, on the planning board's end, just, just so it's clear to you, Norma, because...
Yes.
We actually have been before the planning board, um, we, we had a preliminary meeting with the planning board before we made application, got a feel for, hey, is this something that you're interested in, is something that's going to fly? I had some questions regarding the definition of used car sales and the fault code.
Right.
So we had to sit down, and effectively, it was, it was generally well-received. Now, I will tell you that we had proposed initially X amount of cars on the plan, and we came in for formal application, for a number of reasons, we elevated the number of vehicles on the site, and that wasn't well-received. So what we did is we reduced the number of vehicles on our site, and at the last planning board, last go-around, it was better received, okay? So, to answer your question regarding the number of cars on the site, the multiple uses and so forth, I think from a planning board perspective, at least with current planning board, I think we're okay there. The, the issue that becomes is, which I thought was a little odd, but this is, this is why we're here tonight, we have an apartment, okay, and as part of that, you're only required, you're only allowed in a business zone to have a certain percentage, and I want to say the number's 35, okay? Or effectively double that what exists there now, okay? So in order to maintain that apartment the size that it is, based upon the overall layout of, of the footprint of the building, we need a variance, okay? That's number one. The second thing is, is which probably deserves some discussion, because I'm not actually a hundred percent fanatic either, but there's two provisions within the code regarding buffers and setbacks. So the first discussion is building setbacks. When I look at the code, when I pull up the, the bulk regulation table, it requires certain setbacks. In the B1 zone, I believe it's 40 feet from the front, 10 from the side, 10 from the side, that's what's required.
Okay.
We were showing, right now, we have pavement in the front, in the front of the existing building, kind of a drive aisle, we'll say, and we have pavement on the right and the left-hand sides of the site. Effectively, that pavement is pretty close to the property line, so the initial plan was to show, and the plan that you're showing in front of you shows cars in those spots, and we have to just, you know, re-striking and so forth, but effectively, those spots. My understanding is determination by the planning board that they didn't want, when we talk about setbacks, it wasn't specific to only structures, but they didn't want anything...
Right.
...within those setbacks. So, in an effort...
Thank you.
In an, in an effort to try and, and, let's call it appease that concern, we initially had, um, cars sitting in front of, display cars sitting in front of the building, in that, that paved area. We've taken those out of there, okay? We do show on both sides, within the existing paved areas, vehicles for display. Because these are display vehicles, what we were told was that they would have to be set back 10 feet from the property line. So effectively, what we would do is we would have a strip of pavement 10 feet deep, and then had to set, set the cars 10 foot back, which did make a whole lot of sense, based upon the pre-existing status of the existing site. So, my understanding, that's why we're coming before you relative to allowing, we're not looking for anything, a variance for, for anything in the front, we understand that, kind of keep the greenery in the front and so forth, so, uh, even if it's paved, but we can make that work. We were looking for a variance to allow vehicles within the side yard setback for display. Um, you're allowed 10, we show 7 feet, because we're three foot off the edge, looking for, looking for that variance. The other aspect which doesn't show up in this is, and I just want to make sure we're covered, is the issue of landscape buffer. Again, it's a pre-existing site, this site was subject to a previous site plan approval.
Right.
But we also require, the, the code requires a 20-foot landscape buffer strip in the front and 10 foot on the side. In the front, we're covered, because it doesn't include access aisles, but on the side, we wouldn't have that. So if it's something that we would have to include as part of this application, I want to make sure we're kind of covered as part of that. So that, that's particularly what, the reason why we're in front of this board tonight.
So, I, I mean, I'm seeing cars all over the place, I'm trying to understand how many, well, again, site plan, are you before the planning board for an amended site plan approval?
Yes.
You are? Okay, so the planning board referred you to here.
Back to the board.
Okay. Um, what is that construction? Do you have a septic on your knee there? Yeah, that's a septic. Under the driveway, okay. So, I'm seeing, it says eight spaces, but it looks like some of the cars are parked at an angle as opposed to being directly into the spaces. Is it eight existing spaces and then, I, I'm, your number eight's not making sense to me, sorry.
Eight, eight, eight.
Along the right side of the lot.
One, two, three, four, five, six. The vehicles that are shown on an angle...
Right.
Are DV, display vehicles.
Okay.
There should be, if you're looking at the same print, one, two, three, four, five, six...
Right.
...on that side. And you'll see that dotted line there is actually the 10-foot setback, okay?
Yeah, understood.
So, in that, on that location on the north, well, that's the south side of the site, we, we show those display vehicles kick back that 10-foot, okay? To show that we can do it.
Right.
We prefer to have them up against the edge of the pavement, but in that particular We prefer to have them up against the edge of the pavement, but in that particular case, we can make it work. It gets a little tougher over on the other side. While it doesn't show that dotted line, there was a question as to whether there was a 10-foot side yard on both sides because the way the bulk regulation table in the code says, it says you need it for one, but not for both. Apparently, it's been clarified, that's the discrepancy in how it was printed. So we're going to go with, we need 10 feet on both sides. That drive aisle next to the building would make it impossible to get those three vehicles in there if we had to adhere to that. So now you'll notice, because these cars are display vehicles and the planning board determined it was display, we had to kick those back. But for regular vehicles, standard in-and-out vehicles for employees and patrons, we were required to meet that requirement. So that's kind of why those are set back and our other ones are where they would be typically. I didn't answer your question relative to the eight.
It looks like there's eight parking spaces is what, as opposed to the display vehicles. That's probably what the difference is?
Right.
Okay.
When you angle them to try and get the best angle and look from 82 and all that kind of good stuff.
Right. Let's talk about this apartment then. 1,300 square feet for a two-bedroom apartment is huge. I mean, 1,300 square feet is the footprint of a house in many cases. So I'm just curious as to why the apartment has to be 1,300 square feet. As part of your request for a variance is for an extra-large apartment.
The, well, the way it is right now is the way it was back then.
Back then, when?
When I had it approved in the nail salon.
Okay.
All I want to do is use the nail salon area that was the nail salon for an office. I don't want to change nothing that's already there that I was approved for.
So you've had this apartment this size since the nail salon opened?
It was the ups, it was half of the, not quite half of the downstairs. Well, I mean...
Okay, go ahead. Not quite half of the downstairs?
Right.
And?
And then later on, I had gotten a permit to finish off upstairs.
Okay, so that's part of the apartment?
I guess you can say so.
For the purposes of the calculation, I absolutely assume that the upstairs was part of it, okay? I don't see any other definition it could have, certainly not part of any kind of commercial space. You have to define it as something and the stairs connect directly from below to the top. So the purposes of, you're looking at an 130 square foot.
Right.
It's sizable, it's effectively...
Mike, sorry, you've got to come back to the microphone.
It's effectively, I would say, you know, 85% of the building. I mean, it's that big.
Maybe they asked the question in a different way. Was the original plan approved with the idea that upstairs wasn't finished and that why it wasn't an issue? And then they didn't realize that you went and finished it, you got building permits and everything?
Well, was it approved to have, with a permit for this apartment?
Yes, I have that picture. Was the original site plan approved with an apartment?
Yes.
Well, with the upstairs though included in that square footage, probably not.
The question was, was the original site plan approved with an apartment?
So there is a special permit for this accessory apartment?
Right, that was included and it was always labeled...
Of what size of an apartment?
Okay, that, that...
That's the second part of my question.
Right, that I couldn't say because I don't recall. But I can probably assure you that it did not include the upstairs.
And these are a full set of stairs, these aren't, this isn't a pull-down thing or anything like that?
Full set. It sounds as if the upstairs always existed with a set of stairs, but it was effectively, you know, attic space.
Can we go and do a site visit? Can we go see this? I mean, this is hard for me to...
Yeah, I mean, that's probably, you know, with everything going on with this thing, it may make more sense so everybody knows the deal.
But how much of the problem gets solved? He's using it for non-apartment purposes.
Correct.
How difficult would it be to close it off so the tenant can't use it? Put a lock on the door.
Or install a door, you know?
Say it's part of the...
But what that would do would effectively reduce the variance that would need it because you would include that as part of the accessory apartment, which would lessen the variance.
Well, if it was already approved, you still need the variance. I don't know what the original approval states.
I guess if we're looking at the floor plan, I'm sorry, Mr. Charlo, what you just said was that half of the downstairs was for the nail salon? Yeah, come on up, that's fine. It appears to me that the nail salon is this room here with the front porch and the handicap bathroom, right?
Correct.
So this is your apartment. Oh, and there's an office here too?
Yeah, this is the office.
Okay, so that's prob, I mean, but this is...
Then this is the living room, the two bedrooms?
It's about 60% of it.
Yeah, I was just, I don't see square, I don't see measurements or anything along here. So, but my sense, I agree with Jim, is my sense is that this is definitely less than half, all right? You're now got two bedrooms and a bathroom. You're going to, I'm going to assume each one of these walls is, you know, each one of these lanes is probably close to 10 feet, right? Maybe the bathroom's 7 feet, I don't know.
Yes, these are 10 feet.
All right, so this is, say that's 30 feet across and then this is, I don't know. Mike, measurements in here would be so helpful.
I can give you whatever you like. We were asked to just provide a schematic, you know, but we can provide a little more detail so you figure out the numbers.
I guess I'm concerned, this is an area of town where the business should be encouraged. Business use is primary, all right? And by having such a large space for residential, which really doesn't belong in the business zone except as a caretaker's use, accessory use, more than 50% of the downstairs is being used for residential, which is not what the code was, says.
Which certainly not the intention. So if somebody came in and were looking to do a new accessory apartment, certainly they would be, would have to conform with that. Now, relative to the location, yes, primarily from here south, there's residential units kind of popped in here and there, but effectively it's more toward commercial end. If you go from here north toward Claude Branch on the left-hand side...
Oh, that very different.
There's a few residential, so it's, and the one, there was a house that just burned down next room was a residence. So it, you know, it's not totally outlandish that there would be a residential component.
No, this is probably the transition point, actually.
Right, right. So, but I do understand the intent of the town is to try and keep commercial and residential residential. It's just, it's been the pre-existing use of this site for a extended period of time that's, you know...
To the extent that this town, and I think we all should be encouraging economic development and business, you know, I think I have less concerns about the extra parking and the display vehicles. I think I'm more concerned about the residential use in the building here. I truly think we need more information. Can we get planning board minutes and stuff related to this so that we can have an understanding in any building department records related to what special permit, the size of the apartment, and at what time the second floor use was permitted and for what use?
Yeah, I agree. Check the record. I think as part of this, going back to the original site plan, the issue of the size of the apartment, because it was a pre-existing, I don't recall that being an overriding focus issue. You know, there was an apartment, it's existing, and I think it went along the lines of that, so. So let's check, let's check the record.
That's exactly what I want to do, okay? Let's see...
The nail room, that's going to be closed off, it's going to be locked off from the, it's this archway door. So that's not going to be accessible.
So the nail, what Barbara's asking is the nail room and the handicap bathroom and the waiting area, that's still separate, not being used right now?
Right.
This whole area?
But it also says archway.
Except you might be using it for the office.
Right, but no, I'm going to use this whole thing.
For what?
For my office.
Okay, for the display vehicle business?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. And because in the past, the order detailing, my office was in the back. In that building, that little building.
No, I know, yeah.
So now I figured I might as well just use it all up front. And the little office that's in the back, they will not be stored up. Because that was, I finished that all up front. So I would use the whole front, maybe.
The question is, on this schematic where it says archway proposed door, is there a door between the nail room and the living room?
Okay, so this here, this here was what I had sketched way back when it was first approved in the nail salon. This is Mike, read out it, but that was the sketch. I have the top page to it and the sign, my CFO at that time. Would you like to see that?
Yeah, is there a second floor plan too?
No, no, no.
I'm just asking, is there a second floor plan too?
Also asking what this is saying, though. Is there a door here or not?
There is a fire door there.
Okay, and is this bathroom in or not?
This bathroom is not here, it's here now. It was back then, but we moved it because it had to be handicap.
Okay.
So we had to use the...
Or handicap bathroom, so this whole thing became that.
Right, it's a half, it's split in half with a door here.
And so this is the apartment entrance is over here.
Right, the coming back door? To get to this apartment, you come to the back.
This has got to be updated, so. Get the measurements now, Mike's going to do that.
Yeah, this is not ready for public hearing. This is a fire building?
Too many missing.
Sorry, Mike, we need some more information.
No, that's fine.
Have you seen this or no?
He's not putting his name up.
All right, so in 2006, you have a C of O for a finished attic and bathroom. Doesn't say that it's residential space. But I don't know what else it would be, I mean...
What did it get filed? It got filed as a rec room, is that what says on the permit?
Finished attic and, yeah, rec room is just checked off, finished attic and bathroom.
Where's the bathroom upstairs too?
Yeah.
Yes.
So there's nobody living upstairs?
Not at the moment, no.
Not at the moment, not ever?
No, not at the moment.
All right, so if I call you one day, I can come over and come see it? I've met other board members, if we want to schedule an official site visit, that helps, but it's...
Yeah, I think we need all the other documents because...
Yeah, we need some other documents.
An updated version of whatever is you're proposing, what is existing and what you're proposing because right now this has got, it's very confusing.
Well, you know, in terms of the schematic, you know, the schematic that you have in front of you reflects what's out there today.
It doesn't have the dimensions.
But what we're looking for is, was this, what's out there today, is this what was approved back?
Right, I'm giving you what's there now.
Right.
If you have to do more research relative to digging through the files, so be it, that's another thing. But I don't want to, you know, we try to make it, usually for something like this, we determine, we provide a schematic and then we provide calculations based upon the square footages, which we do at the office. But, I mean, I can give you a breakdown of dimensional areas.
But do you understand my contention? You're saying that you included in the square footages the second floor. But Mr. Charlo was telling us that he uses as the second floor for storage and as a rec room. So I'm getting, which means that either he's living downstairs and this is his apartment or there's not a clear tenant landlord distinction there or he's having access through an existing apartment. It's just, I'm just confused, sorry.
But besides anything else, I mean, you're putting in percentages in here. We obviously need the dimensions and stuff so we can see what the...
Yeah, and I gave you a worst-case scenario too, understanding presuming that the upper floor was related to the residential component. I mean, maybe just a lack of maybe discussion between us. But if I see a set of stairs going from the residence, residential portion upstairs, and it's a game room, then I'm assuming it's not a commercial-type use. So that's why I included the upper floor as part of below. And when you calculate the size of that area, when you're looking for the variance, yes, you're going to be looking for a much larger variance than it would be if that area wasn't considered rec. So it sounds to me like it's more of a fact-finding to go back to find out, hey, what was originally approved for this out here? Are there any records relative to the floor plan? And did anything change between then and now?
Right. All right, do more people want to do a site visit or do we just want to each do it on our own as we feel the need to?
I agree, each to do it on their own.
Yeah, I don't, well, I think if I have the dimensions, it's not important for me to say. The stairs go up from the kitchen, they go up from the kitchen, so, and that's the way it is. From the outside, I know the property.
Right.
But I think the more important thing is the actual dimensions and that kind of stuff and our own research as to what was approved back originally by the board.
Okay. Pam, can you do a check of the records first to see what you have so that, advise Mike so that he's aware of what you have found and then, all right?
The only suggestion, you can certainly come to me on your welcome tour. To get into the building, there's obviously a tenant there, so if it was coordinated where everybody wanted to get inside, probably be better off rather than four board members knocking on the door and kind of in and out if we want to do it. It's up to you, you know?
But then we pick a date now and it gets a lot more complicated in terms of...
Well, I'm not sure I need to see the ins and Mike. I'll take your word on the dimensions and that kind of stuff. And I, you know, if you say the stairs are there, go up from inside the apartment, that's what it is. So absent some other plan where it gets, you know, closed off from the apartment by a door or something, I don't know what other plans can come up with to make our decision easier on the variance. Maybe consider it between you and your client, I don't know.
And again, as far as I'm concerned, if the chair visits, does a site visit, I'm happy with that. But I still need dimensions for the first floor and the second floor and what's happening and what you're proposing because right now it's very confusing with the paperwork I have in front of me. So I definitely need both information.
Where are you at with the planning board? You're not in public hearing yet, are you?
Uh, no, I think they said come here and then come back there.
Okay, so let's give us, let's give us another month, see what we're records Pam. Pam, we'll get back to it with what records she finds. And then between now and next month, I'll be out there, all right? I'll contact you, Mr. Charlo?
Sure, no problem.
Okay.
Well, I'm just trying to clear my head. You just want to come and see that that's what's there.
I need to understand what's out there.
I got a problem with that. But I'd want to use it the same way as it was. Office the same way, I'm just taking over the nail salon.
I understand.
Okay, just to sell some cars.
And I'm, I don't, that's not the part that worries me, honestly.
Okay.
All right, it's because your rep, you said, you started by saying 50% of the downstairs was for the residential space, but that's not what the floor plan is telling us. So that's why, and then whether the rec room is being used by you or it's being used by somebody else, I got to see where the space flows.
It's storage.
Well, then, that's what I'm saying. You and Mr. Gillespie talk about it and formulate a plan, it's exactly what you want to ask for from this board. Obviously, that's the concern, that's the primary concern here. We want to keep the residential use down. So you and Mr. Gillespie talk about it, we'll come back with the, yeah, the amount of the residential use down. So you and Mr. Gillespie talk about it. He'll draw a plan indicating exactly what the request is going to be for the residential use and we'll have that information. In the meantime, the chairperson will come out and see it.
All right, again, I don't, I don't think, does anybody have a problem with the parking, with the cars and...
No.
No. I mean, I don't, I don't think any of us have a concern about you wanting to operate a business here. We're just trying to understand the residential component of the site. That's all we're trying to understand, okay? Thank you. I'm sorry if we're making it more confusing for you, but there's been some statements that contradict each other, so that's, let's just go to the bottom, all right? Thank you. All right. We'll go back to second call. So our first one is Appeal 3651, Signa, Salvatore Signa, 66 Saddle Ridge Road, Hopple Junction, requesting a 19-foot sideline variance for an existing 1,100-square-foot sport court and a 240-square-foot shed pursuant to Section 194-95(c) of the zoning ordinance. Do I have a motion to open the public hearing, actually to reconvene the public hearing?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, Dr. Signa, we actually haven't seen you in a while. We've seen somebody else representing you. And so some questions came up at the last meeting while you were working through the process with the planning board. I understand this court's been there for a while, okay? No question, your boys were using it. The dilemma that we have right now is that because it's probably been there, I think I was told 2006, so it's probably been there about eight years now, is your boys are probably grown much older now. And so at some point, you, although the use by your family might now be more restricted and not, they don't necessarily use it as much, although I'm sure, you know, it still gets used. Our concern is that if we grant a variance, that variance stays with the property. And ultimately, this, you could sell your house and somebody else could move in who then has younger family, a younger family, and then starts with much more activity in the evening hours and things like that. So one of the concerns we had was, there are lights. You have tall overhead lights on this, on this sport court. And I think we were hoping that those lights would come down or at least we could reduce the height of those lights, so maybe they're sitting at the top of the fence. Because the higher the lights, and your property is up higher than some of your neighbors, the higher the lights, your neighbors are going to be looking up into those lights in essence, even if they're, you know, from further away. So to the extent that either we can eliminate the lights, okay, and there's two reasons for the request, or lower the lights, it's not just the impact of, the visual impact on your neighbors and lights spilling off of the court and, but it's also the noise that comes, gets associated with nighttime use of a court. If you've got multiple kids out there using whatever the roller hockey or, you know, tennis or whatever it is, there's going to be noise, potentially loud music, other things that could be happening. And you're entitled to the enjoyment of your property. But I think we have to worry about the neighbors and minimizing the impacts. So that's why our request to the professional that you had at the last meeting was, would you consider removing the lights? The response that we got back was no, that you were not interested in removing the lights. So the question, the question at this point is, would you consider minimizing the lights? Can we bring them down? Because right now they're on tall light poles.
Okay, well, first of all, we have to think about where it is in my, you have my plan, right? It's a big rectangle.
Right.
So the sports court is really in, almost in marshland, right? Before the marshland starts because it's, what, Lake Pond and Vinneton, something like that. So it's far away, it's far away from all the homes, okay? So for example, the back of the court, right? The houses, the houses behind, beyond... The houses, the houses behind, beyond the sports court, okay? There's, is over 100 yards, well, it's like 200 yards to the next house. 200 yards. You know, because it goes, remember, and, and it's, and it's, it's, the court is also set down, it's set down. The houses are high, and then there's like a valley going down into like Lake Pond Edmonton? What is it called? What's the name of the pond there?
Edmonton.
Edmonton, okay.
Oh, Edmedeen.
Edmedeen?
I know what you're talking about now, okay.
So it's, so...
Edmedeen.
Now, then, so on the left now, now on the left, we have, we have a bill, right? The per, the pedestals, and they, they don't even, they, they can't, because there's woods between us. On the side, there's wood, the woods are here. And again, he's not affected at all, right?
No, your, your neighbor to the left wouldn't be affected at all, I agree with you.
And the people across, you know, 200 yards away are not affected. Now we got the, now we got on the right, correct? Yes, there is a house, you know, let's say 70, 80 yards away from the, this court. However, we put up these huge evergreen trees that are hu, and they're huge. They're as high as these, they're as higher than the ceilings. And it's, it's like, it's like a wall, it's like a wall. So, and also make a, make a note that these, these boxes are low, low, low lights. In other words, they're boxed, they're boxed, and they're just, and they're just facing down. So it's a, so a very light glow. It's like a peaceful kind of lights. There's, there's no radiation, there's no, there's no movements horizontally, right? And then around, around the fence, I have this porous membrane, like they would put around tennis courts, porous black membrane, you know, you know, eight feet high, that covers the, that covers the fence. So you can't even see into it. And everything is obscured, and it contains as far as light, light pollution. So I, I don't...
I think the concern is, though, that that light allows people to use the court at 10 o'clock at night bouncing a basketball. So you may not see the light.
Mm-hmm.
But to hear a basketball echo through the area at 10 o'clock at night is an issue. So that's the concern. The lights allow for the use at nighttime when other people would not be satisfied with noise.
So in other words, you're telling me there's been complaints about this?
I'm not saying that there are complaints. I'm saying that the, the lights signal that this is not just going to be used during the day, it's going to be used at night in a residential area where people may be asleep at 10 o'clock at night. But the lights allow you to use the court at 10 o'clock at night.
Correct.
So that's, that's the issue. The issue may, people may not see the lights, but that, those lights are allowing your family or whoever to play at a time that the residents in the area may not, may not be happy with.
Yeah, and that's...
And the problem, Dr. Signa, is, I think on top of that is, well, you're obviously trying to be a good neighbor. At some point, you sell this house, and this runs with the land, the next owner may not try to be such a good neighbor.
Right, your children may have grown, but the next owners may have teenagers that...
Yeah, I mean, I still have, I still have teenagers in the house.
Right.
Yeah, two are in college.
Right.
Two in college, but, but, yeah, most of the, yeah, 90%, let's say 90% of them, they play, you know, it could be the four brothers together, maybe two, three friends, but usually in the daytime. Nighttime use is seldom, yeah, more in the summers. More in the summers, they'll use it, because there's no school the next day, right? So, uh, but they never, they never do, maybe, my kids are, you know, they try to be respectful. You know, yes, it's light music, you know, you never, you don't bow, you know, so...
But again, that's this use, that's your...
I can tell you from personal experience, what you may think is polite, somebody else may not.
I know.
And I can tell you from our own personal experience in where I live.
Hmm.
Somebody's dog barking twice annoys somebody. A bouncing ball bouncing twice at 10 o'clock at night, or at 8 o'clock at night.
Yeah.
And so the, the question is, how do you find a balance within your neighborhood that you may think is okay, but your neighbor does not?
Yeah.
So that's the question, and that's what we have to decide.
It's not like, for example, the, the distances I mentioned, the distances I mentioned. From my house, from, from my deck in the backyard, right? I'm looking around 70, I'm looking, you know, like 70 yards before I could get to the sports court. And there's no trees in between, I can visually see it. You know, it's, it's, it's miniscule, it's not aggravating. Yes, if you, if you listen, if you listen, you know, you listen, you could, you listen, you could see it, but it's, even when you're out there, it doesn't really bother you at all. You know, it's not aggravating.
But sound echoes strangely, especially if you are down in a valley.
Yes.
Down south.
How tall are these lights? They look like almost 20-plus feet.
I, I would have to say, I would have to speak, they, they would have to be at least 15 feet.
How tall is your fence? 10 feet? A standard fence is going to be 10?
No, I think the, the fence is eight.
Well, basketball rim is how high off the court? It's more than twice that.
What's that?
The basketball rim off the court is more than twice the height of the basketball court, probably two and a half times that.
But the fence would only be eight feet.
Was it nine feet, eight feet fence?
Yeah, I don't think, I don't think they would...
Well, again, so you got 16, you got 20.
Yeah, it's at least 20 feet to all those lights.
I don't know about 20, but, but some, somewhere of 15.
Want to come see the picture that we're looking at?
Yes.
This is the picture that you provided with your application. If this is an eight-foot fence, all right, here's your lights. They're more, they're more than double.
Yeah, look at the fence.
No, this is the low fence. You have to go by the high fence.
Oh, by this back fence.
Oh, yes, this is, this is an eight-foot fence.
Okay, so if I go by that, I'm going to double, easily, I'm doubling it to get to the height of your...
I mean, I could, I could check it out, I could measure that. 20 feet or is it 15 feet or 17, 18 feet, I don't know. But yes, it's going to be something between, I would have to say, so, it has to be, yes, again.
I mean, is there another suggestion? Can we say that the lights can't be on later than, that's a condition?
Or you're pushing on enforcement.
Yeah, that becomes an enforcement issue.
Well, the neighbors complain, I mean, I, yeah, I don't know, I'm just trying to think.
I mean, again, remember, you built this court. We're, we're giving you consideration to the fact that it's there, it's going to be a horrible expense to rip it up. So we're, we're not disagreeing with the fact that you want to continue the use of the court. We're just suggesting that you meet us halfway here and say, all right, we'll limit the use of the court to daylight hours. All right, and if we eliminate the lights, I don't think any of us would have any objection to, let's just get it done. But right now, you're, we're, we'd be allowing, again, not by your family that necessarily, or that understands the impact of the sound on other neighbors, but the future owner of this house at some point, the variance is going to be there, and if the lights stay, they're going to allow, you know, they're, who knows what they'll do back there? That's what we have to plan for.
So what, you mean, put a contingent on the, on the, on a variance, not beyond like, say, 11, 11 p.m.?
No.
No?
Why do we need the lights?
Because...
Can the lights come down? Can the lights be shorter?
Shorter, it can be shorter, right?
If it's shorter, they can...
It still allows nighttime use, so I agree with you, that's, that's my issue.
But it, it's really, it's, it's really, I mean, yeah, it's not bothering anyone, except I, the only person I...
Okay, Dr. Signa, I think you have explained this several times.
Yeah, I mean...
But you don't have the three votes to support your application, so you have to think about what are your options at this point.
Yeah, I don't know, what, whatever, I'm, I'm not, I'm not pleased with what I'm hearing, because I believe...
But we've said, excuse me, we've said this repeatedly? We've said this all along about noise and our concern about lights?
No, never.
Yes, we have.
I never heard it.
We have.
Not to me.
Well, because you weren't here.
Okay.
And so if your, if your professional wasn't representing it back to you, then we have a concern. That's, but that's, we've clearly had the conversation here about our concern about noise and a concern about the lights, and after-hours use, so...
So what, so we just want to just make sure that by 10 o'clock, the kids in the summer don't play? Something like that? Set parameters?
Again, that becomes an enforcement issue, and I don't want to burden our law enforcement to be coming to your house because your neighbors are complaining at 9:00.
No, Mike...
10:00 or 10:30, or for, in 50 years from now, 30 years down the road, when this issue becomes an issue for somebody else when you've sold the property. So I think the best solution would be to, um, to eliminate the lights, so then there are no lights, there's no nighttime...
After use, after-hours use.
No, after-hours use, and that's it.
Yeah, but me, the type of father I am, my boys obey me. They don't mess with me. If I say 10 o'clock because I promised the board, then they're going to, they're going to abide by dad's rules.
But when you sell your house and new owners move in, those kids may not abide by their dad's...
That is true, I wouldn't have control.
Yeah.
Then, yeah, so, uh, how about I, how about I, I promised the board then that when I sell my house, this could be 10 years, 15 years, 20 years, I don't know.
30 years, right, we understand that.
Okay? That when I sell my home, I would have to ta, I would have to tell, and I'll put it in writing and stuff like that, that I'll take then, I'll take then the lights.
That becomes an expensive issue, because then it has to go with the deed, and then you'll have to get an attorney involved.
No, before I put it on, on, before I put the, the house on the market, just remove them.
If you wanted to, you could achieve it, but there's declarations, the question is whether you want to do it. But you could do a separate declaration, it's these, that says exactly that, and he's held with.
Right.
But the question is...
That I can't sell the house, I, for example, whatever, I can't sell the house until I remove those lights.
Well, it wouldn't hold up your sale, it'd be that the user of the property couldn't use the lights after your use.
I'm sorry?
You, I think you were talking in terms of the lights would be during your administration, and whenever someone else bought it, it wouldn't apply to them, so they, the lights would have to come down off the poles. That's what's been talked about. It could be achieved by other than changing your deed, by a separate declaration in a recordable form, county clerk's office, indicating what the understanding is.
Are we okay with that? Do you allow the current?
It's what you want to do, that's all.
Yeah, do you allow the current use to, the continuation of the lights?
That's what I'm saying, I mean, we don't want to come back on the full variance for the whole thing.
Right.
So that's not fair, we could make that separate, yeah, but, I mean, again, I'm not aware of any complaints to date, I don't know if that's not really the issue, we're worried more about the future.
Did you get any things? No? Okay.
Just following the chairperson's comments, we had a review in October, when you were here, and we talked, we touched on the noise issue. November, we had a meeting, and there was no one present, either yourself or a representative. We really talked about the lights at that meeting. And in December, we had a meeting, and your representative was here, you weren't here. We further discussed lights, the noise. So it's been discussed on multiple occasions.
Okay. I remember him mentioning lights, not, not sound. I remember mentioning lights, but not sound.
Well, the lights, I mean, that's the problem with the lights.
The word noise, the word noise, the word music were used in previous meetings.
You could get...
All right, so...
Be out till 2:00 in the morning, if you wanted to, if you have the lights, so, could be a problem, so...
What's the measure of...
So, so this measure that we, that we should consider is that, what would, what would the documents say regarding the lights? That I would be able to...
It was discussed, but the board has to give a direction.
Yeah, I don't, I don't...
The declaration against the property, it runs with the land.
Okay.
The, the declaration, it says that while you own the house, the lights can be placed as is. Once you sell the house to a third party, then the lights would have to come down.
And who would be responsible of taking the lights down?
It could be enforced against the person who applies to, and applies to you, and applies to your successors and interest.
Okay.
Who applies your house.
All right, would it, would it be...
The board, the board has to give us that direction.
Okay.
Let's close and resume.
Would it, would it be easier on the board that I would be responsible?
Yes.
Right?
I wouldn't want a...
The board would like probably...
Yeah, you would want to be free of that.
I wouldn't want to rely on any future owner to remove those lights. No, you, I would...
You wouldn't want me to do it.
The future owners, it would have to be taken down before the future owner.
Right.
Of course, of course. I think what we're suggesting or getting close to is that we're going to close a public hearing, and we're going to have counsel draft an appropriate resolution, well, reserve decision, and that resolution will be part of the decision, which will require you to remove the lights before the property gets sold.
Okay, and then I should show that to my attorney, correct?
If I am directed to prepare a declaration for this board, I would ask that you bring it to your attorney.
Perfect.
Okay.
Great, and then he can contact you if he has any questions.
Absolutely.
So again, we're respecting, and you're agreeing with the fact that your use of this court, if it's allowed to continue, would not be extending into, number one, excessive noise, but also the usage hours-wise is not going to be extensive, probably beyond 10 o'clock or 11 o'clock AM. We're not setting a time clock here, but we're just saying you have to be very respectful of your neighbors.
Yeah, I'm going to get on my kids, obviously, now that it's an issue, you know?
And the board is considering preparing a declaration that says, when you transfer property to someone else, the lights have to come down by you.
That's what it's going to say?
That's what the board is contemplating this.
Okay, and then I'll just show it to my attorney, make sure everything is good, so, so we could facilitate it easily at that point.
Right.
Sorry, again, I would like to see a 10-hour, 10 o'clock termination, 10 p.m. termination time, because 10:11 is, you know, again, it continues, so I think 10 is reasonable, so...
I think we can impress upon Dr. Signa the importance of hours, of the hours of usage.
Mm-hmm.
Again, enforcement becomes...
Sure, stuff.
Tough. All right?
You know, as long as there's no neighbors complaining, then it won't be an issue. If neighbors start complaining, it comes to, then they have, they have the leverage to make it stop.
Right.
Correct.
Well, yeah, exactly, the town, right, yeah. Okay, so do I have a motion to close the public hearing and reserve our decision, and then, you know, we'll have 62 days to issue that decision, we'll try to get it done for next month, but again, we want to give your attorney time to review it as well.
So...
It'll come to, it'll come to my address?
What'll happen is, the board will issue a decision order that'll come, be available to the representative.
Yes.
I guess the question...
Or to him.
Does, yes, you have it.
John, are you going to draft that?
It'll come to me, and I send it to my lawyer, correct?
Will we have an opportunity to review it before we make our decision?
Uh, so whenever you want the declaration, we're happy to prepare it. We'll prepare a declaration in connection with the reserved decision.
Yes, but I guess the question Mr. Sign, Dr. Signa's asking as well as us, are you going to send the declaration to his, him or his attorney before we do the decision?
Who's your attorney?
Joe Vishi. Joseph Vishi, he's, he's my high school buddy.
Okay, where's your high school buddy? Have his office.
In, in Brooklyn and New Jersey.
Okay, I might ask you to provide the address then.
Of course.
Make sure you get it to...
I'll give you the address.
Okay, so I have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. We've closed, and we're, we are reserving our decision for the next meeting.
All right.
Terence.
For 62 days, actually.
Yes, true, thank you for 62 days.
And I'll tell my kids I'm leaving.
Please. I mean, not that they're going out this time of year with the snow on the court, but, you know, all right? Just be sensitive to that.
This is a second call.
Yes, thank you.
So why don't you, why don't you call Pam to, why don't you give her your information?
All right, um, not seeing anyone in the audience, but somebody was just walking in the hall there. We have a second call for Putnam County National Day. Not seeing any...
Jim is on.
We'll, we'll give you a direct number.
Sorry.
Give you the hotline.
I think Mr. Gillespie and his client were talking.
Oh, okay. So do I have a motion to adjourn?
So much.
Second. All in favor? Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.